I'd like to welcome you to this public hearing of the New York City Rent Guidelines Board. This is the last of four public hearings to consider comments concerning proposed rent adjustments for renewal leases for apartments, lofts, hotels, and other housing units subject to the rent stabilization law of 1969 and the Emergency Tenant Protection Act of 1974. These adjustments will affect renewal leases commencing between October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020. I will now take roll call. Please respond if present. Shayla Garcia.
Present.
Leah Goodridge. Cecilia Hossa.
Present.
Alex Schwartz.
Present.
Patty Stone.
Present.
Armand Dejeda. Scott Walsh. May Yu. David Reese. Present? Let the record show, we now have a quorum. The next meeting of the board will be the final vote, which will take place on June 25th, starting at 7:00 PM. It will be held in the Great Hall at Cooper Union, 7 East 7th Street in Manhattan. Doors will open at 6:00 PM. Directions to this meeting are posted on our website, nyc.gov/rgb. There are copies of our meeting schedule here tonight. If you are interested in receiving email updates about upcoming RGB meetings and hearings, please take one of our flyers that are here today, or you can sign up by going to the board's homepage at nyc.gov/rgb. Feel free to ask members of the staff at the registration desk to help you sign up for these email updates. I'd like to thank you all for attending this public hearing. The board is looking forward to hearing from many of you regarding the proposed rent adjustment guidelines. Based upon the testimony we have heard in previous years, we know that many of you have concerns about housing conditions and various aspects of rent regulation that may be beyond the mandate of this board. In order to help address these concerns, representatives from New York State Homes and Community Renewal are available to answer questions and provide advice. They're located in the lobby. The board very much appreciates their willingness to participate in these hearings. Before we proceed with testimony, I would like to go over rules and procedures for those who would like to testify before the board. If you wish to speak, you must confirm your presence with the RGB staff at the registration table located near the entrance of the hall. Speakers will not be called if they have not checked in at the registration table. There is a Spanish interpreter here today for those who would like one. When registering to speak, please notify the staff if you'd like an interpreter. I will try to call several names in advance. When your name is called, please come to the front of the auditorium. If you have materials to submit to the board, you should give them to the RGB staff sitting at the sign-in table near the entrance. I will attempt to alternate speakers between tenants and owners, but this may not always be possible. In order to accommodate as many speakers as possible, each speaker will have two minutes to give their testimony. An additional two minutes of time will be given to those speakers utilizing interpretation services. To help speakers keep track of their time, we have a clock. It's right here. We will start the clock when you begin speaking. The clock will beep once when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining, and will continue beeping when the allotted two minutes are up. If you are still speaking at the end of two minutes, I will ask you to quickly wrap up your testimony. We expect many speakers, and the board wants to hear from as many speakers as possible in the limited time we have for this hearing. We understand that it may be difficult to say everything you want us to hear in just two minutes, but please understand that it is our responsibility to make sure that everyone who has taken the time to come here and testify will have a fair opportunity to be heard. We thank you for your cooperation.
Buenas noches a todos. Me gustaría darle la bienvenida a esta audiencia pública del comité para regulaciones de alquiler de la ciudad de Nueva York. Esta es la última de las cuatro audiencias públicas que se consideran los comentarios sobre los ajustes de alquiler propuestos para la renovación de contratos de alquiler, apartamentos, hoteles, y otras unidades de vivienda sujetos a la ley de estabilización de alquileres de 1969 y la ley de emergencia de protección a inquilinos de 1974. Estos ajustes afectarán o entrarán en vigor a partir del 1 de octubre de 2019 hasta el 30 de septiembre de 2020. La próxima reunión de la junta será la votación final, que tendrá lugar el 25 de junio a partir de las 7 de la noche. Se llevará a cabo en the Great Hall in Cooper Union, en el 7 este de la calle 7, Manhattan. Las puertas se abrirán a las 6 de la tarde. Las instrucciones para esta reunión se publicarán en nuestro sitio web, nyc.gov/rgb. Hay copias de nuestro calendario de reuniones aquí esta noche. Si usted está interesado, interesado en recibir actualizaciones por correo electrónico sobre las próximas reuniones y audiencias de RGB, tome uno de nuestros folletos que están aquí hoy, o puede inscribirse en la nueva página de inicio de la junta en nyc.gov/rgb. No dude en preguntarles a los miembros del personal de la mesa de registro para que lo ayuden a registrarse para recibir estas actualizaciones por correo electrónico. Me gustaría también agradecerles a todos por asistir a esta audiencia pública. La junta espera con interés recibir noticias de muchos, de ustedes, sobre las pautas propuestas de ajuste de alquiler. Con base en el testimonio que hemos escuchado en años anteriores, sabemos que muchos de ustedes aquí tienen inquietudes sobre las condiciones de vivienda y diversos aspectos de la regulación de alquileres que pueden estar más allá del mandato de esta junta. Para ayudar a abordar estas inquietudes, los representantes de NYS Homes and Community Renew, o hogares NYS y renovación comunitaria, están disponibles para responder a sus preguntas y brindarles asesoramiento. Están ubicados en el vestíbulo. La junta aprecia mucho su voluntad de participar en estas audiencias. Antes de proceder con el testimonio, me gustaría repasar las reglas y procedimientos para los que estén testificando ante la junta esta noche. Si usted desea hablar, debe confirmar su presencia con el personal de RGB en la mesa de registro ubicada cerca de la entrada de este salón de actos. No se llamará a los oradores si no se han registrado en la mesa de registro. Esta noche, obvio, habrá dos intérpretes de español que les ayudarán con las interpretaciones. Cuando se registre para hablar, notifique al personal si desea un intérprete. Intentaré llamar a varios nombres por adelantado. Cuando escuche su nombre, por favor, venga al frente del auditorio. Si tiene materiales para distribuirle a la junta, debe entregárselos al personal de RGB, que se encuentra en la mesa de registro cerca de la entrada. Intentaré alternar oradores entre inquilinos y propietarios, pero esto no siempre es posible. Con el fin de dar cabida a tantos oradores como sea posible, cada orador tendrá dos minutos para dar su testimonio. Se darán dos minutos adicionales de tiempo para hablar a los oradores que utilicen los servicios de interpretación. Para ayudar a los oradores a hacer un seguimiento de su tiempo, tenemos un reloj. Comenzaremos el reloj cuando empiece a hablar. El reloj emitirá un petido una vez que el altavoz solo disponga de 30 segundos. Continuará sumando cuando hayan transcurrido los dos minutos asignados. Si todavía están hablando al cabo de dos minutos, le pediré que concluya rápidamente su testimonio. Esperamos que haya muchos oradores y que la junta desee escuchar a tantos oradores como sea posible en el tiempo limitado que tenemos para esta audiencia. Entendemos que puede ser difícil decir todo lo que quiere que escuchemos en solo dos minutos, pero comprenda que es nuestra responsabilidad asegurarnos de que todos los que se tomaron el tiempo de venir aquí a testificar tengan una oportunidad justa a que se les escuche. Les damos las gracias por su cooperación.
Hi, Red Hotspire! Ho ho! 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 Hi, Red Hotspire! Ho ho!
Welcome. Welcome, everyone. So we're here for the main event. We're here for the main event, which is to hear all of you testify, so I'm going to start reading the names of those who'll be testifying. I'm going to read a few names in advance, and that way you can be on deck for when it's your turn to go. So I first have Larry Wood. He'll be followed by Lauren Renz, to be followed by Kathleen Wakeman, Wakem, and to be followed by Deirdre Stringfield. So Larry, Mr. Wood, welcome.
Thank you. I'm here on behalf of SRO tenants, and I want to thank you for the preliminary vote for a zero guideline for the remaining SRO tenants in the stock. And I really hope you listen to the tenants who've come out here today. You're going to hear tenants from rooming houses on 14th Street, throughout Harlem, some of the big hotels. I know somebody here from the Dexter, many different buildings, and he'll confirm some of the testimony we gave you earlier. I'm going to be reading the testimony for Ann Cunningham. I'm passing it out to you. If you look at the second page, you can see her picture, and I'm putting on AC's pink hat. AC had a medical procedure earlier this week, and she was so distressed she couldn't be here, but I promised to read her testimony, because she's been here for 35 years. It's her first year she's missed. So, on behalf of Ann Cunningham, I am a residential hotel tenant for over 36 years and have testified before the Rent Guidelines Board during my whole tenancy. Today, I'm testifying on behalf of the Tempo Hotel tenants. The Tempo Hotel, formerly the Commander Hotel, is now owned by Amico and has been downsized from 201 units to only 63 tenants still occupied by statutory permanent rent stabilized tenants. Many of the tenants are elderly, disabled, unemployed, and low income. Twenty years ago, Harriet and Steve Kromen were hired as managing agents of the Commander by the landlord. In their one year as managing agents, the Kromens displaced over half the tenants in my building. The building has never been full occupancy of rent stabilized hotel tenants since that time, and the units have been rented to tourists. College students are kept empty. Tenants in my building have been through much over the years, and we've endured much. In part, this has been due to, we've endured, in part, this has been due to the Rent Guidelines Board granting zero or modest increases with provisos, therefore keeping our rents affordable. Thank you for considering the plight of New York City's remaining residential hotel and SRO tenants, and for not voting to approve an unwarranted rent increase, thus preventing further homelessness. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have Lauren Renz to be followed by Kathleen Wakem. Oh, I'm sorry, Lauren Renz, please, next?
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just before I start, I want you to know there, I did bring my testimony for all of you to read. There are nine copies. I did bring testimony for you to read. I also brought attachments, but the attachments, I only brought one copy of.
Okay.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Okay, good evening.
Can we hear in the back? Can you hear in the back? Just give us one second so that everyone can hear you. All right, try again.
Good evening. Better?
Good in the back?
Can you hear me?
I think so. Thank you, sorry for the delay.
No problem. Okay, good evening. My name is Lauren Renz. I'm the live-in owner of a 127-year-old brownstone on West 80th Street. 2019 marks my 40th year providing affordable rentals while caring for a very old and needy house. I have eight rental apartments, half are stabilized, with two extremely, including two extremely low rents. Fortunately, I have good relationships with all my renters. But over the past five years, the economics of providing good housing, when half of it is regulated, has become unsustainable. While stabilized rents have been allowed to rise less than 4%, most of my big operating costs have increased at double-digit rates. I spend by far the most on property taxes. As background, the finance department assesses all six-to-10-unit buildings on a block by estimating the income a building could collect, not does collect, but could collect, based on its square footage, regardless of whether rents are regulated. This year, finance claims I should collect $286,000. That would be nice. More than double actual 2018 rental income. By their standards, I should collect $2,383 a month per apartment, or two and a half times my lowest stabilized rents, 957 and 966, and more than the highest unregulated rent. Meanwhile, my taxes consistently go up the maximum allowed for my building class, 8% a year. My tax bill is $43,100, up $3,200 in one year. If you add $3,300 for water and sewer, taxes are now 40% of all my expenses and 32% of my rents. Without reasonable rent increases, how can owners keep up with these unstoppable tax increases? It's not just taxes. In 2017, my three-
Thank you. Please, if you could wrap up, please, thank you.
Well, a lot of the other increases in expenses are double-digit as well. But to sum up, I've put 40 years into housing, my fellow New Yorkers, and maintaining my building. It's very hard to do that when rent increases fall far behind operating costs. I'm therefore asking you to vote for fair guidelines this year. A 4% increase for a one-year lease and 8% for two years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Kathleen Wakem to be followed by Deirdre Stringfield.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Wakem. I have lived in my rent stabilized apartment on the Lower East Side for over 40 years. My building is owned by Madison Realty Capital, a private equity firm worth over $4.5 billion, with a B, dollars, according to their website. Madison is among the realtors who have gained a 43% profit this year. Since 1990, the board authorized cumulative rent increases of over 187%. This is in addition to fuel passalongs, poor taxes, and other fees. We had poor taxes of $40 and $85. Fuel passalongs are never extended despite the decrease of fuel cost. These are the reasons that tenants are rent burdened. Where I live, in Community Board 3, the median household income is $42,268. Over 40, and for 50% of tenants who live there are rent burdened. Low-income households make up 38% of total rent regulated households. The recent RGB studies state that tenants' incomes have remained stagnant for the fourth consecutive year, while landlords' profits have increased significantly over 13 consecutive years. By the time a tenant is eligible for SCRI, the rent is unaffordable. SCRI freezes rents. It is not a rollback. I'll skip this part. To remedy these past injustices, a rent rollback is necessary. The statewide Tenant Protection Act of 2019 states, "A serious public emergency continues to exist, and it was passed as an intervention to prevent speculative, unwarranted, and abnormal increases in rents. It is up to you to vote on a rent rollback. If this is not possible, vote on a rent freeze. To do otherwise is a mean kick in the hearts of tenants." Thank you.
Thank you. I have Deirdre Stringfield to be followed by Faith Steinberg.
I am an owner and resident of a three-family building in Brooklyn. I'm here to advocate on behalf of small landlords like myself, who are subject to rent stabilization rules and regulations, because we see the J-51 tax abatement from the city nearly 25 years ago. The sweeping changes in the rent stabilization rules and regulations in favor of the tenants through small landlords like me under the bus and ran us over. There are no exceptions to the rules. I've had a tenant who has lived in one of my three-bedroom apartments for 18 years. Her current rent is $1,500. She's decided to move and relocate to another state. Needless to say, the apartment is in need of significant renovations. Under old stabilization rules, I would be able to raise the rent by the vacancy allowance and also by the apartment, individual apartment improvements, that I can't do now. So I'm here to request that the Rent Guidelines Board approve rent increases by 3%, 6% for a one-year lease, 6% for a two-year lease. I'm also here to advocate for the vacancy allowance. They give that some consideration, because I have no other recourse to do any repairs, to do anything in this building, because of the changes in the regulations. So, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. I have Faith Steinberg to be followed by Michael Rosen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So many issues, so little time, what tenants are put through. This past May, I heard about a documentary by three filmmakers called Decade of Fire, which exposes landlords in collusion with insurance companies who burned down low-income tenants' buildings in the South Bronx in order to build luxury condos. Firehouses were being closed, firemen were being laid off at a time when there were more and more fires. The people were being blamed, and there was no benign intervention. 80% of housing was destroyed, and the people were ignored. There's just a little bit of what's happening on the Upper West Side. Fires in two buildings and rebuilding as luxury condos on Amsterdam Avenue. But there must be a law that says tenants who lose their apartments due to fire must be ordered their apartments back at the same regulated rents. Also, there are apartments that are being warehoused. Way back, some of the housing activists tried to have laws against warehousing, to no avail. With the affordable housing shortage, there's no substantive reason why apartments should remain empty for months. Landlords should be fined for unoccupied apartments that are vacant for an unreasonable time. No $20 increase. New on Luneli says, "Housing is a basic necessity of law. Housing is a human right." No rent increases.
Thank you. I have Michael Rosen to be followed by Rosalie Grossman.
Hi, my name is Michael Rosen. I'm third generation in the real estate business in New York City, okay? And I've been a small landlord, and I almost consider myself like a boutique landlord, okay? A small landlord and a boutique landlord in the Bronx, okay? My family remembers in the '70s leaving buildings, handing buildings to keys, to the supers and saying, "Here, we can't afford it anymore." Okay? And these buildings were free and clear, okay? My buildings are still now free and clear. We don't overfinance the buildings, and we see the 20- and 30-unit buildings there, they are not going to survive, okay? And we don't, we're not extended, not even overextended, but these buildings are going to fall apart by the wayside by all landlords throughout New York City. You're doing a tremendous disservice to society. You have to give them increases. And I'm going to throw out something else that's never been discussed here: SROs. You guys have basically frozen SRO rents for the last 20 years, okay? And let me tell you something, okay? The SRO, the SRO units have been frozen. There's no such thing as a vacancy increase. It's always been frozen for the last 20 years. If the rent was $500 20 years ago, it's $500 today. There's no way of surviving. Insurance goes up, and I'll give you a perfect example. Insurance for my SROs that I have went from $90,000 to $270,000 in one year, okay? These buildings are going to go down faster than the Titanic, and it's something that you guys have a responsibility, for the people, to increase some of these rents so they can survive. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead. Excuse me, sir? I think there's a question for you.
Is there a question? Could I ask another?
I just had two clarifying questions. You mentioned that you own SROs in the Bronx? Is that correct? Do you also own rent stabilized apartments? And if so, where are they in the Bronx? Which neighborhood?
167th, near the Yankee Stadium area there, in the South Bronx area.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Would you let him use the mic so that everyone can hear his response? I'm sorry, thank you.
Can you give us an estimate of how many rent stabilized buildings you own?
Right now, I own five rent stabilized buildings right now. And let me explain something to you. Three of the rent stabilized buildings, one's been in the family since 1956, two of them have been in the family since 1971, okay? We're old-time families in the business, you know? We have a very good relationship with all the tenants, okay? Like I said, I consider myself a boutique landlord in New York City. You know, everyone knows my, they all have my cell phone number. They call me if there's an emergency at night. I get onto it. Pretty much none of my buildings have violations, okay? We take care of the tenants very well. But the problem is, if you're going to have to start cutting expenses all over the place, the tenants are going to lose. And like I said, and I'll give you a perfect example, okay? A 26-unit building of mine that I have, okay? I think by the time I'm finished, at the end of the year after expenses, I'll put into my pocket, after working there, $20,000 to $30,000 a year. We're not talking about a lot of money. We're not talking about, we're not talking about someone that's making millions upon millions of dollars, okay?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe, Ms. Grossman?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good afternoon. My name is Rosalie Grossman. I'm a member of the Metropolitan Council on Housing, which this year celebrates 60 years of working for New York City tenants. I volunteer for the Met Council tenant hotlines, where we receive calls from tenants looking for help with all kinds of housing difficulties. The root cause for most of their problems is that tenants, is that rents are already too high, and/or their landlords are looking for ways to evict them. This is the year that each of you on the RGB has the responsibility of joining with the state government in making New York City more affordable for low and middle-income renters. All rent stabilized apartments in New York City have a history, beginning in 1974, when the unfair and now thankfully replaced rent stabilization system was established. Regardless of who has lived in each apartment over these years, the rent increases have been piling up year after year. Each new tenant inherits all of the increases that came before, including all RGB increases, MCI's, IAIs, poor taxes, fuel surcharges, and 20% vacancy bonuses. So although the new Housing Stability and Tenant Protection Act of 2019 is now law, it does not erase the rental abuses of the past or the high rents that were generated. Unfortunately, there is no rollback. My experience is typical. Actually, I meant to skip that part. Landlords complain that their incomes are not high enough, but according to the latest RGB report, their incomes have increased for the 13th consecutive year. And now they will state that some of their abusive income in the past has either been eliminated or reduced by the new law. They will suffer terribly and be unable to maintain their buildings. However, they retain the huge profits that they have made and will continue to make. Please consider when you make your decision about the rent increases for this year, that they will be added to those of the past. I ask you to vote for a rent rollback this year on both one- and two-year leases, so that the rent stabilized tenants of New York City, of whom more than 50% are rent burden, will not lose their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Manhattan Borough President Brewer is here, and I invite her to the podium, to be followed by Marietta Hawkes. Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you. I am Gail Brewer, Manhattan Borough President, and I thank the Chair and the RGB for the opportunity to testify. I represent tenants who live in approximately 260,000 rent-regulated units and 14,000 buildings in Manhattan. We know that in, that there are 790 fewer rent-regulated units in Manhattan than in 2018. Since, not enough rent-stabilized units were added over the past year to make up for the 3,873 units that lost stabilization in 2018. That's the bad news. The good news, as we heard earlier, is that Albany has come through with the Housing Stability and Tenant Protection Act of 2019. And I thank- And I thank everybody in Albany, but we have a lot to make up. I do hope that the RGB is looking at the expert testimony of former Rent Guidelines Board Executive Director Timothy Collins, who has very meticulously pointed out that there are lots of ways of looking at this issue. He points out that his NOI calculation does not include any income stream other than rent collected from tenants, thus excluding, in his words, "rising owner income through statutory deregulation, major capital improvements, individual apartment increase, and other sources of increasing income." He says owners have been overcompensated based only on the RGB rent increases over the past 27 years without the need to rely on MCI, IAIs, high-rent vacancy, and other issues. I mention all of this because I want to point out that it is possible to have, at the very least, make your determination apart from any consideration of potential loss of MCI and IA income. I also want to make sure that we talk about the rent control tenants. We know, for instance, that Mrs. A., who's a Holocaust survivor, she calculated that her rent had increased by more than 17% between 2015 and 2018. Until last week, rent control rents were calculated through this very complicated system of MVR, MCR, and fuel adjustment, cost adjustments, that always increased and ended up with a 7.5. We're very excited that Albany has changed rent control to the average of the last five years of rent guideline board's one-year renewals. Thank you, Albany. So, in light of the board's ongoing responsibility to ensure neither building owners nor tenants are on duly burden, I urge you to do your part to continue the course correction of past increases that have heavily favored building owners. I call on the board to enact the lowest proposed increases of 0.5% increase for one-year leases and 1.5 increase for two-year lease moves at the most. And I also want to thank the board. I understand the gentleman previously who owns SROs, but most SRO units have also market in them, and they should not have any increase at all. Zero for SROs. Thank you very much for your consideration. I know you have a hard job, chair reefs and board, and I appreciate this opportunity. Thank you very much.
I have Marietta Hawkes to be followed by Ann Greenberg.
Good evening, board. Thank you for listening to my testimony today. I live in Stuyvesant Town 42 years, and I hope to live many more years, but I don't know. I am testifying today for the seniors who are too frail to testify, for the fair-market tenants, for the preferential tenants, for the families. I pay over 50% of my income to rent. I postpone going for doctor's appointments, physical therapy, because of the high copays. I can't even take my two cats, Fantasia and Zozo, to the vet because I'm worried about paying for my rent. I can't have air conditioning in the summer. I hang out the senior centers and the community centers in the wild. That's where you'll find me in the summertime. This year, we have five MCI's. Our predatory landlord is Blackstone. These five MCI's, the tenant fees will be spent paying for the legal fees just to fight these MCI's. And I'm just wondering, I can't sleep at night, just wondering what Blackstone is planning next to get the seniors out of housing. I had a call from the landlord yesterday, they didn't leave a message, and I don't know why they call me, because they know I'm giving testimony today. I had my brother, he would help me pay the rent, but he passed away due to 9/11, he had lung cancer. And him and his wife also lived in Stuyvesant, and they were there 10 years, but they got them, Tishman Spy, accused them of... Yeah, they had to fight the rents for non-residency. And then my brother's wife died, so he said, "I can't continue with the fight." And on my floor, just this past January, we had three dear neighbors of mine I knew for 20 years. They were forced out because of the high rents. Lucia and her family, I knew her daughter growing up, 20 years in Stuyvesant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Please vote a rent freeze, and I just leave you with one word: read, 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 read.
Thank you. I have Ann Greenberg to be followed by Janet Bullen.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Rent is the largest item in most everyone's budget, I know it is in mine. I'm Ann Greenberg, I'm a rent-stabilized senior citizen in Peter Cooper Village, and I'm also a member of the Board of Directors of our Tenants Association. I was originally planning to reprise the greatest hits from my other presentations over the years, but then the new rent law passed in Albany, and, you know, finally we got some justice. So, what's the case for a low RGB increase, or a freeze, or even a rollback? How about 13 straight years of positive net operating income for landlords, even with the two rent freezes? There is still plenty of MCI's in my rent that will never go away. MCI's rubber-stamped by DHCR and compounding. They represent infinite profit for my latest landlord, an organization cited in a United Nations report for predatory practices around the world. I'll pay off the newer MCI's in 30 years, but I'm 71 years old, so you can all do that math. But it's not just senior citizens on fixed incomes who need stability in their rent. My community has about 11,240 apartments, fewer than 5,000 are still truly affordable, and almost all the rest are preferential rents. And those tenants experience daily the insecurity of not knowing how long they can stay in their homes. Some families and singles, in order to afford the rent, have crammed themselves into flex apartments, the real estate equivalent of Spanx. But as with Spanx, you can squeeze yourself in for a while, but eventually you have to breathe. Families and others desperate to stay in our community are forced out when the rent gets just too high. When you're paying a high preferential rent, even a small percentage increase can result in a large dollar amount. We know that stable neighborhoods provide better outcomes in health and education. We want to know our neighbors, and we want everyone to feel secure that they aren't one rent bill away from eviction. Thank you.
I have Janet Bullen to be followed by Susan Steinberg. Good evening.
Good evening. I just want to say I wasn't going to speak this evening, but I really do feel for all of these tenants who feel they can't afford the rent. But I don't feel, as a small owner, this is our responsibility to keep the rents low so that, I think it's, the city of New York is protecting with these laws that were just passed, a lot of people who have the money to pay the rent. And, but the people who don't have the money, I don't think that the small property owners should have to support them. We've had a building in our families for 100 years. My grandparents came from Czechoslovakia, and the land of opportunity was where they came to make a living for themselves and their families. We've always lived in our building, we take care of our property 24/7. We do a lot of on-hand renovations or work because it's very expensive now to hire people. With what's going on now, it's going to be impossible to upgrade our building, which is over 100 years old. I'm very nervous, I didn't want to speak, but I felt it was important because there's not many owners here today. And I think everyone's frustrated. Most of the owners I know have just, they just don't want to be there anymore, doing all the work they do all the time for people that they do care about. And I just don't, I wish there was a way to take care of people who needed it, but I didn't, I don't think it should be owners to lose what they need to keep the buildings going. They should have support other ways, and I would love to be able to support them like I do a lot of my tenants. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Susan Steinberg to be followed by Maggie Figaroa. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Susan Steinberg, President of the Stuyvesant Town Peter Cooper Village Tenants Association. We advocate for 28,000 residents. I'm concerned about how the recent Housing Stability and Tenant Protection Act is going to influence your decision. So I'd actually like to suggest a few things for you not to do. I want you to not feel sorry for owners. I want you to not issue a rent adjustment to help owners because of the recent legislation. I want you to remember you're not mandated to make owners whole, you are not mandated to protect owners against the effects of inflation. Tenants have no such protection. Instead of being whole, tenants are rent burdened. Instead of being protected against inflation, tenants are losing economic ground. Your mandate is to establish rent adjustments which, in the best of all possible worlds, are fair. Your history of fairness has been reprehensible. Many of you are new to the board, so this history you may not know, except for the past two years. During the Great Recession, 2007 to 2014, the rent adjustments were outrageous, at a time when people were losing their jobs in droves, and they allowed owners to collect criminally high rents at the worst possible time. The result was rent burdening, displacement, and homelessness, all of which we are still dealing with today and which the new rent law scarcely impact. Your own 2019 income and expense study shows that from 1990 to 2017, net operating income for owners rose 53%. Despite the recent legislation, owners will continue to make a profit. The two-pass rent freezes have been a drop in the bucket to neutralize the bad effects of decades of profiteering. The one thing I urge you to do is to pass the lowest possible adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Maggie Figaroa to be followed by Rosa Clayton.
Maggie Figaroa?
No, Maggie Figaroa, to be followed by Rosa Clayton.
Thank you, Board Guideline members, for the opportunity to talk to you today. My name is Maggie Figaroa. I am a tenant at 50 West 93rd Street under Stella Management. I work at a nonprofit organization that helps people living with mental illness. Working for a nonprofit organization doesn't pay much, but I stay because of what the cause means to me. I lived at 50 West for over 30 years. I was married there, I have raised my children there, I have cared for my mom in her last days. 30 years later, I'm divorced and live with a daughter who has a learning disability. It is just the two of us. I am the only one bringing in a paycheck. I receive no assistance, but have always paid my bills on time, never late. I am a good tenant. Staying in my home means a lot to me. I know my neighbors, they know me. We have grown together and watched out for each other. I know my neighborhood, I feel safe. I always pray every time that nothing in my apartment breaks down, because if it does and it gets replaced with a new refrigerator or stove, I get an added MCI on top of my rent increase. My apartment is the same as when I moved in 30 years ago, nothing new or updated. Same flooring, same old cabinets, yet I am paying more every year for the same apartment I moved into 30 years ago, nothing new. Every year, I just work myself into a panic. Is this going to be the year I can't afford to stay in my home? How much of an increase is being proposed? Can I afford to stay? My health is declining, I am much, much older now. If the rent keeps going up, I don't know what I'm going to do, I simply can't afford it. It is just the two of us. I want to stay in my home, it's my home, I don't want to lose it. I'm asking for your help, I'm asking for a rent freeze. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Rosa Clayton to be followed by Parvati Devi. Good afternoon.
I'm here as a tenant, and what I'm about to say is not a reflection of every single landlord. It has to do with those who think this earth belongs to them and only them, and everyone else is a means to an end. That's who I'm addressing here. Now, I'm talking about specifically about property management, 301A Central Avenue, Lawrence, New York. We are located at 47 Beach 28. From what I understand, this particular rental management are notorious for being bad, for trying to get people out of their apartment, to using them as a means to an end, to get the apartment de-controlled so they can increase the rent. Now, we used to live, my husband and I, on Beach 46 before Hurricane Sandy, so we were forced to be displaced to Brooklyn. So after experiencing a couple of hurricanes, I did not want to return to Far Rockaway, and I preferred to be in a shelter than to return to Far Rockaway for fear of the flood because we stayed in the house while the flood came back, and it was so bad that you could only live in a boat. We did not listen to the mayor, and so the fear of drowning was too much. So, we didn't have a choice. So upon praying, praying, we heard about an apartment in Far Rockaway, we didn't have a choice. So, we went to rental management, they told us everything that we wanted to hear because they took advantage of our ignorance. We didn't know anything about rent control, rent-stabilized apartment, none of that, so they had a word, same preferential, I asked them, "What does it mean?" "Oh, don't worry about it." They didn't give us a rider. They signed the first lease, they refused to sign the second lease, the third lease they did not want to sign, and they claimed they never got it. So I'm in litigation for over two years now. This last attorney is the best attorney.
Thank you.
So I'm here to say that no rental increase, we should not pay the cost of whatever because we supposed to pursue our profession, and we should not have to be earning $300,000 a year in order to afford to live. It doesn't make sense.
Thank you. I have Parvati Devi to be followed by Laverre Sutton.
I have trouble with my ears, so if it hurts, we'll make that.
Good evening.
Good evening. My, excuse me. My name is Parvati Devi. My landlord is Francine Realty. I've lived in the same rent-stabilized apartment over 45 years in a 10-unit brownstone on the Upper West Side. I am the only rent-regulated tenant. The rest pay market rate, and we're 30% vacant for more than a year. My main concern, I pay over 50% of my meager income for rent. See attached copy, which I have with you here, of me in the New York Times, 24 August 2016, for details how bad my rent burden is. The issue is dre-scre. Only freezes our rents. It is not a rollback, like other rent increase exemptions, to 30% or maybe a third of our income. We need legislation to make this happen for us. Dre-scre is paid for by the Department of Finance, which requires recipients to sign two-year leases. We have never had a zero increase on a two-year lease, never. If my rent goes up, will the city funds, find funds for it along with the rollback so many of us need? Enough is enough. Too many of us are hanging by a thread. With the cost of living ever-growing, I have come close to homelessness. And the high-priced one-year leases, market-rate tenants need a right to a lease renewal, including two-year leases. If only the frequent brick-to-stud renovations would stop, but I still need to stay. but I still need to stay. Make this happen, you can bring back our communities. Thank you.
I have Laverre Sutton to be followed by Sharon Kans.
Hi, my name is Laverre Sutton. Thank you for no rent increases in our SROs. I've been in my SRO for 20 years. I've had to fight five different landlords to stay. At one time, my building, I was the only person in my building. Now, it has been converted to... The garden apartment is now renting for $4,700 a month. The first floor is $4,000. The other studio apartment is 37, between 37 and 4,000, and the top floor, $4,000. It's so good to the landlord. He has bought two other buildings to do the same thing. The homelessness families in California, when I left 20 years ago, it was beautiful. Now homelessness, the people are camping in the parks alongside the freeway. Where do you think homeless people are going to go? And they're not all druggies. Their children are with them in encampments, and you can see it. And it's not just the neighborhood bad guys. It's some scientists that worked at UC Berkeley. They're camping along the freeways, too. It's going to happen here. Just some humanity, please. The balance is becoming equal. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Sharon Kans to be followed by Kadija Kans.
Hello, my name is Sharon Kans. Thank you for listening to me. I'm the President of 50 West 93rd Street Tenant Association, and I'm here in that regard. The tenants in my building, we have been met with more MCIs than I can count, and we have been so burdened by them that people who started out... It started out as Mitchalama. Stella bought it. Stella's a large real estate developer, and he's buying up a lot of the Upper West Side. And he said, "You live a half a block away from Central Park West. Therefore, we're going to fix this building up," which they are, "but then we get handed an MCI." The rent laws, and I'm grateful for them because they help a lot of folks, but they won't change MCI. As I read what they wrote about MCI, there are so many things that haven't been changed, like the sods, which we get every six years, that I can only say to you, we desperately need help from the RGB so that we don't get priced out any further than we have already been priced out. We used to have 125 apartments. We now have 68. And there are two people who are close to death, and as soon as people die, Stella takes and makes market apartments. And so, I just hope you consider that. Thank you.
I have Kadija Kans to be followed by Richard Barr.
Good evening. My name is Kadija Kans. I'm here as a tenant and as a tenant leader and as an organizer for tenants and neighbors. I was born and raised on the Upper West Side. However, due to rent increases due to MCIs, which DHCR seemed to approve very quickly in my building, and just the high cost of living on the Upper West Side, I'm barely struggling to stay there. Due to the recession some years ago, I've been late in paying... I had to keep deferring my student loans, and so now I'm late in the process of actually paying off my college debt. Because of that, I foresee a long future, or a longer future than I expected in life, of paying back my college debt. That, as well as, again, living in Manhattan on the Upper West Side, and the price of food and just regular things in this world have just... Another rent increase would make it very difficult for me to stay in my apartment. I also work as an organizer, and I've met many other people in the same situation as me. We have average incomes that are less than $50,000 a year. It seems to be too much for any assistance from the city, but too little to be able to make the rent or to... I just wanted to finish by saying that I've heard some landlords talk about their profit, but we are people who are struggling to make a living or to live in our apartments. I'm trying, we're trying to stay out of shelters. I have gotten a rejection notice from the Affordable Housing Lottery every day, so I'm pretty sure that it would be very difficult for me to find any other place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Richard Barr to be followed by Joanna Wong.
Good evening. Thanks for taking my testimony. My name's Richard Barr, and I have rent-stabilized status here in Manhattan. And this year, like every year, the parade looks the same. The landlords who come to talk about struggling to make ends meet own maybe five units, or 10 units, or 15 units, and they may, in fact, have legitimate issues about trying to make a profit. You never hear from the people who own hundreds and thousands of units. They don't come and talk about their problems because frankly, they don't have them. They have benefited from vastly inflated MCIs that go on and on for years and years, and this year's new law corrections in Albany will only partially address that problem. And even more seriously, those of them who have benefited from the decimation of the regulated units in this city because of 20, 25 years of vacancy de-control, which will only now stop, have converted so many of their units to market rents, which are not only, you know, two or three times the regulated rent. In some buildings, depending on the building, they can be five and six and even more times the rent that regulated tenants are paying. They don't need any help from you. If the small people who are really struggling need a little bit, that's one thing. You have the technology to find out who's who and what their situation is. Don't give anything to the people who are making out like bandits. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Joanna Wong to be followed by Vaira Kilgor.
Hi, my name is Joanna Wong. I work full-time in my family's small business who owns and manages a rent-stabilized building for almost the last 40 years. We take great care in the building. We have good relationships with our tenants, and we're committed to providing quality living. But the continued low increases is making it hard to continue to do so. Just this year, New York City property taxes, which is the number-one revenue generator for the city, has increased 13%, and that's low compared to past years. Insurance this year has increased 14.5%. We had to change the windows in our hallways, and in order to follow code, the cheapest manufacturer I could find was $23,000, and then another $23,000 for install. We had to do Local Law 11 facade compliance, which was $50,000, and then unreported toilets running for $8,000 in water expenses. Operating costs across the board are growing much faster than the current proposed 2.75%. Keep in mind, increases for one-year renewals for the last five years in aggregate has been 3.75%. The increases just don't keep up with our operating expense increases. Regular increases is one of the last few ways left to actually try to catch up. We've cut back on upkeep. We're doing a lot of things ourselves. But if the increases continue to be unsustainably low and while rents stay flat, then either expenses need to be capped at the same rate or the government needs to help offset that differential some way. Otherwise, eventually, owners are just going to keep cutting back until eventually, just the only financially rational and responsible thing is to disinvest. Thank you.
Thank you.